Ms. Steel, will you please call the robe?
Yes, thank you, sorry. Mr. Gibson.
Here.
Dr. Worth.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Crisco.
Here.
Mr. Brazani is not here. And Mr. Nikosia.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Is Pastor Daniels? Pastor Daniels isn't here? Okay, then, Mr. Tony Nikosia will lead us in our invocation. And we're happy to have Ms. Anna Johnson tonight, fifth grader from Bethel Elementary School, to lead us into the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to meet as the elected officials of the county, God, and that you have charged, that citizens have charged us with the responsibility of being fruitful and thoughtful in the decisions that we make as it pertains to the county. So go with us tonight as we go through tonight's agenda. Lead us, guide us, and direct us in all things, in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you so much, Anna. Good job. Okay. Moving on, we have the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moving to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, matters presented by the board. No matters presented by the board? Okay, moving on to county administrator items.
Yes, we're really excited that this is Public Service Recognition Week, and so we've been having a number of activities for our employees to let them know how much we appreciate them. And tomorrow morning, they'll have a special video sent to them by email from the chair, sending them a greeting. And so we're excited about that. And also food trucks and other things that make people happy. There is a new podcast available, as well as a survey that is still available for people who are interested in the Working Waterfront Study. And Ms. Ducey Ortiz, as well as the intern, did the latest podcast that our Community Engagement Department put on, so encourage you to take a look at that. And anybody who goes to the county's website will, they have a pop-up reminder about the Technology Overlay District meeting to discuss the possibility of a district which would allow data centers. And that's been getting a lot of attention, I understand, on social media. So we really hope that people will come out so they can learn more about it and make sure everybody understands that this is not something that is a done deal, or maybe not even possible. It is an informational program and to allow citizens to give some input. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Steel. Moving on to our scheduled presentations, we have quarterly update from the Virginia Department of Transportation, Mr. Lee McKnight.
Good evening, members of the board. Good to be in Gloucester today. Do want to give the board a quarterly update in terms of VDOT. Construction projects underway. There's a lot of paving going on throughout the county in Gloucester. 614 Feather Bed, 621 Warehouse, 623 Wareneck Road, and 641 Low Ground have all been completed with pavement, minus some traffic engineering items. There's multiple routes on the Cape Seal for 2025, on this year's resurfacing schedule, and then the surface treatment routes as well. Those routes are listed there. Some construction project updates. The Route 17-16 Intersection Safety Improvement Project is underway with a projected completion date of late December 2025. The Route 17 at Fox First and the Shop Safety Improvement Project is projected to start October of 2025. Some bridge project updates I did want to give the board. The Route 3-14 Burke Mill Stream Bridge Rehab Project is underway with a completion projected of late fall 2025. And Route 17 Northbound Bridge Replacement over the Dragon Run at the county line of Gloucester and Middlesex is projected to start early 2026. Some other pipe replacement projects I wanted to give a quick update on. Route 614, that's a state force pipe job. That's the corduroy. Those replacements are underway. There's actually two locations down there that are being replaced. One is complete. The other one is beginning, began this week. And that's to replace those pipes ahead of the resurfacing schedule that's coming in down there this year. Some additional pipe replacement projects I did want to mention. Route 198, there was a pipe in the last, not this last storm, but the storm before that, that has begun to fail on 198, and that has been scheduled to be replaced. Anticipate that to be replaced in the next couple of weeks, or the process for that into June. And with that, I'll take any questions that the board may have.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thanks, and appreciate all that you're doing to keep our roads paved and cleaned. So do you ever consider using asphalt in for roads in subdivisions? Or is always Cape Seal? I mean, what's the difference? I mean, I know I mentioned to you a small area off Hickory Fork that I know might be Cape Seal, but sure would be nice if we just got asphalted. So who makes that decision? I know Feather Bed was a very long, long lane of asphalted with, you know, almost no one living on it, except at the very end, it goes into all next era.
Right. So Cape Seal versus asphalt is real, one, it's the condition of the road that's currently there. If the road is too far, if it's in extremely poor condition, Cape Seal might not be the best option for that route. You really need some sort of a substantial base Cape Seal to work. Asphalt will probably be a better option in those cases. Feather Bed, for example, was not a good candidate for Cape Seal.
Right.
In addition, it comes down, another item to that is cost. Cape Seal is cheaper than asphalt, so we're able to get more lane miles out of a Cape Seal as opposed to asphalt. Not saying that subdivisions are never asphalted, because they are. It just depends on the condition and the funding for that year.
Right, well, thank you. I did mention that one subdivision, and I think your people went down, looked at it, and I asked if that would be considered for a possible asphalt job versus Cape Seal. So the second one is, on 14, as you go where the old movie theater was, on the other side, there's a bankman. Is that being addressed? I understand that could be a potential problem, you know, for the whole road itself.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we're working with the county on that slope repair. There is a, I guess it's a sewer line or a pump station right there, so we're having to work around that. But yes, sir, we are aware of that and working with the county on that repair.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Thanks, Chair. And thank you for your report, Mr. McKnight. Appreciate it. And I just want to make sure I have this correct. Yeah, is the Route 17 at 610, is that Woods Crossroads?
That is Woods Crossroads. Yes, sir.
Okay. And could you give us a little bit, a few more specifics on kind of the next phases of the construction and what you anticipate?
So they're going to, barriers are in place. They're going to start widening the roadway so that they're able to shift traffic further away from the workers that are going to be in the median area. They're going to close the crossover at some point in the next two to four months, give or take, so that they can actually construct the crossover and the turnaround locations on either end of that crossover.
And how far from the intersection are the turnaround locations, roughly?
I believe it's, I don't, I'll have to look at the plans, but I believe if I'm not mistaken, it was like 200 to 300 feet from the intersection.
Okay. And then, I just wanted to compliment your team on Wareneck Road. That paving job was excellent. There was a lot of pooling water on that road during rains, and I came through there recently during some heavy rain, and there was very little, if any, pooling water. So great job on that project. But I just had, out of curiosity, a question. About two or three weeks after the paving, then there was a lot of white gravel put next to the road on both sides? Is that to shore up the shoulder, or what's the purpose of that?
So for shoulder stone, they can use stone, or sometimes they use millings. But that's, if the surface of the road has been raised, you know, you want it to be a little bit less of a severe drop-off into the shoulder, if you have the shoulder there. So that stone just helps, if a car were to veer off of, slightly veer off of the road, they're able to correct hopefully back onto the road with that shoulder stone. Some areas, it's not, like Low Ground, for example, that's, there's little to no shoulder in Low Ground. But where it is possible, that's the purpose of shoulder stone.
Okay, okay, thank you.
The color is just whatever comes out of the quarry, so.
Got it.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. McKnight? Okay, thank you, Mr. McKnight. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment period. Going to ask the speakers will come, and please keep your comments to three minutes, three minutes or less, but no comments pertaining to the public hearing. This is just.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ms. Steel, Mr. Wilmot, Howard Maury York. Well, the budget passed, as all those aware knew. It would, even with all the fanfare, with no benefit to the taxpayer. Also, the citizens are not taking government seriously, so the taxes go up and the worker's net income becomes less, so much for a very wealthy county. I saw where Myers Road Company is using the back of the old page site for a staging area for the upgrades to the county roads. Are you getting rent for this space? If so, how much? And if not, why? VDOT is doing considerable work around the county. I saw where Low Ground Road was fully rehabbed and paved. For the taxpayers who don't know, I put that on the floor two months ago. The squeaky wheel gets the oil. Additionally, Venus Road was cleared of brush and debris several years ago, a beautiful Virginia byway. Now it is completely overgrown again, so much for maintenance. Reviewing the Cape Seal projects, it is paramount that Gloucester County and VDOT may not be speaking to each other when it comes to this type of work. Public utilities have a $200,000 water line renewal going to take place in Tillage Heights area, Farm Road Road, et cetera. Consider this new surface may have to be torn up for the water project. The case, what is a waste of the taxpayers' funds from VDOT? Also, was VDOT aware of this ongoing project? VDOT has a habit on occasion, using letters in a sentence without definition. It would be nice to spell out the letters to words. On the positive side of the article, was well-written by identifying the road number to a name. The subdivisions should also be named. As for the AI contract, there should be enough data collected locally already to determine what is happening in Gloucester while having an outside source tracking every footprint, entire track in the county. If one were to pay close attention, cameras are hanging here and there all around the county. Do we really need this additional tax budget expense? Amazing how most do not read road signs. Before Wawa, a sign reads seven miles to Gloucester. Just think, in the past, it took me 15 years to have Charlie Hotel placed behind Gloucester signage, so much for policing. I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Is there anyone else at this time? Anybody else? Public comment? Ms. Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had one comment submitted from Patrick Walsh, Gloucester Point. Not one more dime should be spent on any projects for parks and recreation, fire stations, AI, or any other facet of the community until the water system is fixed. On the subject of AI, the board had a meeting back in February where the Board of Supervisors spent money on the program and implemented it without ever being advised, excuse me, on it or reviewing it. The Board of Supervisors then edited footage of the speakers' comments out of the video that was posted the previous day of the damning evidence that was presented about the water situation in Gloucester Point specifically at the Colony Circle. Not one person at the county should be using AI when they clearly cannot post the truth in public record correctly or accurately. I was at Beaver Dan Park a few weekends ago. We are paying for eight people to be on staff during a Saturday. These individuals, excuse me, these individuals ride around in brand-new Kubota Gators ATVs, so the taxpayers and citizens need to pay for eight city employees overtime to work a bait shack that is less than 600 square feet in size. This stinks of corruption. The programs that are being funded are a clear sign of favoritism that should be investigated to the full extent. It's clear that health and safety of the community is of no concern to anyone on the Board of Supervisors, since they have refused to do anything about the water situation for over a decade. Everyone in Colony Circle's water heater has been ruined due to the lack of action taken by the Board of Supervisors. We won't be able to sell our houses because we would have to disclose that our city water cannot be drunk. We are holding meetings, adopting budgets, and funding projects left and right on credit. This county will be in debt forever. Our grandchildren will be in debt from this reckless and wasteful spending and policies. Something must be done about our water sewer system ASAP. The budget is non-existent. We need new leadership that will do what's in the best interest of the citizens, not what's in the best interest of whoever sits on the Board of Supervisors. That was the only comment, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Crowe. Are there any other comments? No, the public comments. And we're going to move into our public hearing. And first, we have a public hearing on the proposed secondary six-year plan for fiscal years 2026 through 2031, and the construction budget for fiscal year of 2026. Ms. Ortiz and Mr. McKnight.
Good evening.
Yes.
Going to try to present this. Carol Rizzio typically does it, so I kind of took her presentation from last year and updated it. And then if I have anything wrong, hopefully Lee can let me know. So. Waiting for it to pop up. Okay, so this is the public hearing for the secondary six-year plan. If you recall, we review this every year, although we only have to have a public hearing when we actually propose changes to it. So again, I'm going to focus mostly on the paved roads and non-paved roads, which is part of the secondary six-year funds. There are other funding sources, and I'm not going to go over them tonight. We didn't receive any smart-scale funding in our last round, so we really don't have any changes to that. And Lee McKnight covered a lot of the things that are already going on. But I did want to let you know that we are actually having, there are six studies going on right now in the county that cover most of Route 17 from the courthouse area all the way down to Guinea Road. There are two pipeline studies, two STAR studies, and then we're also doing a study on Roaring Springs Road. If you recall, I think Carol Steel and I, 20 years ago, walked the entire length of Roaring Springs Road trying to get a sidewalk project. We have one going on that's really only going to cover not even a mile. And so VDOT has hired a consultant to actually look at the whole length and actually look at how, if there was a possibility that we could actually fit some kind of shared-use path along that road. So we're really grateful for that. And then Carol Rizzio applied for, and we did receive a technical assistance grant from the Office of Intermodal Planning and Investment. So that grant is to look at data-driven processes to prioritize projects. So there's a lot going on, and hopefully next year or the year after, we'll have more projects to bring to you before the secondary six-year plan and other funding sources. So again, we're going to focus on these two funding sources. These are just examples of things that have been done, the Fiddler's Green Sidewalk Project, and then the Turn Lane on Merritt Drive were all done with secondary six-year funds. The maintenance fund, I just wanted to go through that. Mr. Maury brought up a couple of things, but I will say that if you use the 1804 Road, that is a great way, if you have issues with maintenance. I have a friend that had a pothole. She called 1-800-4-RODE, and the next day, VDOT was there fixing her pothole. So it does work, and they do answer it. So the county, we don't, we don't use the, you know, we don't actually regulate the maintenance fund, but we do work closely with VDOT. And if you do put a complaint into the county, we will let VDOT know and work with them on any problems that you might have. But that 1-800-4-RODE does work pretty well. We get two funding sources for the secondary six-year plan. One is a telly fee funding, which is about $82,000 a year. And then we also get funding for on-paved roads. There's not a lot of money, because we don't have any more on-paved roads left that meet the criteria for paving. But essentially, those are the paving in place, the rural rustic roads, where VDOT just paves over and there's no expansion of the road. We do also get 5% for rural additions, but again, 5% of $82,000 isn't enough to really do any, bring any private roads into the state system. So this is the plan. I'm sorry, it's kind of hard to read. Hopefully in your packet, you can see it better. But there are currently two existing projects that will carry over into this plan. The Great Road Sidewalk Project, which is only partially funded by secondary six-year funding. There is a lot of other funding on that, and that's going to go from the beach all the way up to, I think, Camp Oki and across to 17, and there'll be a crossing there on 17. And then Little England Road Repaving Project. One proposed project that was proposed by the Transportation Planning Advisory Committee is filling the gap, sidewalk gap between, on Short Lane between Dunston Hall and Gloucester High School. And I have a little more on that in future slides, but those are the projects that we currently have proposed. So this is just the location of the different projects. Again, Great Road and the Little England Paving Road, and then the proposed project on Short Lane. This is just an example of the, this is the location of the proposed sidewalk project. So if you recall, we have sidewalks along 17 in front of Lowe's, and then we connected Lowe's through Dunston Hall. So it ends at Dunston Hall. And my understanding is that the Gloucester Track Team actually runs along that road, and in that part, they actually have to go on the road. So one of the members of our T-PAC had recommended that we do the sidewalk infill project. The VDOT did look at it and felt like it was something that could be done, and so they provided a cost estimate. And so this is the proposed project. Sorry, I went ahead of myself. So we think we can put it in the secondary six-year plan and get it funded in a couple of years. Again, there are no new on-paved road, on-paved road projects. The last one that was completed was Bonneville Road. So in summary, we're proposing to keep the, maintain existing projects for the paved road projects, asking the board if they want to add the short lane pedestrian improvements. And again, there's no new on-paved projects. And also, I don't know if there's any other secondary six-year plan projects you'd like to include. And that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, before we open it up to the public comments.
Any questions from board members from Ms. Ducey Ortiz before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on the secondary six-year plan. Any citizens wishing to come forward, please state your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. This public hearing will move on to the next public hearing. Oh, we got a vote, we haven't voted, I'm sorry. We have a resolution on page.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Paul, Ms. Steel, will you please poll the board?
Dr. Worth?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Steel. Okay, we'll move on to our next public hearing to consider a code amendment addressing manufactured homes in B1 zoning district and other minor changes to the zoning ordinance. Ms. Ortiz, please.
Okay, this was a code amendment that was suggested by the Board of Supervisors. We, as you know, we adopted the zoning ordinance in September, and since we've been working with it, there's a few minor things that we found that we figured we might as well fix while we're looking at this code amendment. So again, it's the manufactured home in B1, which would be Section 10-4, clarifications regarding setbacks, removal of a conflict related to when a rezoning is effective, along with a conditional use permit correction, and then removal requirement for setbacks shown in the zoning permit. So those are all the sections that we're looking at. The manufactured homes in the B1, there, this affects about eight properties on Route 17 and then one up in Glens. Essentially, these are the different properties that would be affected. So these are existing manufactured homes in B1. In our current ordinance, they cannot be replaced by stick-built homes. They can be replaced by another manufactured home. So the board asked the planning commission to make a recommendation about that, and the planning commission is moving that forward with a recommendation for approval. So this is a section we added to the non-conforming section of our zoning ordinance. I wouldn't read it, but essentially, it does allow you to replace an existing legally non-conforming manufactured home with either another manufactured home or a stick-built home. We did add a 75-foot setback in the highway corridor overlay district. There was a lot of discussion at the planning commission regarding that setback, but that was, felt like if we ever widened 17, which is eventually going to happen in certain areas, that the 75-foot setback would be appropriate in most areas of 17, unless it's existing at a much closer setback. For a sign clarification, we just wanted to add the highway corridor, and then for signs on the divided highway that it has a 35-foot setback. This was a little confusion, confusing in our ordinance, and so we figured we'd correct it while we're looking at this, other changes to the zoning ordinance. And then we had conflicting with our, when a rezoning or a conditional use permit actually becomes effective. One says when it gets recorded in the clerk's office, and then the other was when it was adopted. So we essentially wanted to make these two consistent, so both the rezoning and conditional use permit would become effective whenever the board adopts it, and it would be effective the next day. Then our zoning staff asked us to remove, we had put in having the setbacks shown on the plot plan, but instead, they felt that it should just indicate the distance from the adjacent property lines. One of those reasons is when we have non-conforming structures, the existing setbacks may not be appropriate based on the non-conforming use of the property or the non-conforming structures. So this was to make it clear, you know, the exact distance, their setback, and not require the setbacks to be shown on the plans. So again, the planning commission looked at this, held their public hearing, and voted unanimously with one absent to send this to you for a recommendation for approval. The public hearing was in March, but due to the advertising changes, we weren't able to get it to you in your April meeting. So that's my presentation. If you have any questions, or we can go right to public comments.
Ms. Ducey Ortiz, for the manufactured homes, so if that manufactured home since vacant for a year, it cannot be back, put back as a home then, correct?
Two years.
Is it two years? That's the same for all the stick-built homes?
Yes.
Have we looked at changing that timeframe? Because, you know, I'm going through, if this was something that's in a family with multiple siblings, it could take. multiple siblings, it could take two years before someone decides what, depending on how probate works and if there's a will and everything else, it could take longer than the two years for them to figure out who's going to go back into it.
We do work with people, like if you have your power bill and people are using it, if there's a way to demonstrate that something like that where it was in a will or something, we would work with you on that. It's really when they're abandoned and there's no power to it, and it hasn't been used in more than two years. The two years is in the state code. I don't know if Mr. Will might, would be able to comment on that. I don't know if we can make it longer. Actually, that is one of the recommendations from our working waterfront intern about possibly extending that two-year non-conforming time period.
So, okay. So, we'll, I'll get some clarification later, but that's something we need to get with the state to clarify, because, you know, I know understand these are B-1, but, you know, these people are paying their property taxes and using their land, and then after 24 months or whatever, then they're told they can't use it for what they've been paying for it for. So, thank you for that.
Any other board comments, questions? Okay. Any public comments? Seeing no public comments, we do have a resolution on page 55 of our agenda packet. Ms. Steele?
Do you have a motion?
Oh, motion.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Steele?
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Sorry. Turned it on, and there we go. Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Worth? I won't make you vote again. The motion carries.
Okay. We're going to move on to our regular agenda. Renewal decision on Placer AI subscription. Ms. Steele?
This is a topic that we've brought up before, and I don't want to be redundant of what the staff presented, but I wanted to provide some new information and a couple other examples and things. So, first of all, reminder that this software, it costs us this year in '25, $23,000. The renewal with the inflationary cost is 24.1, 150. When we purchased it, it started June 1. They said if you want to do a 13-month contract just to have everything, a lot of our software renews on July 1. So, it's just an option to do that at no additional cost. The current and expected users for the program would remain administration, economic development, parks, rec, and tourism, and planning and zoning. Information that I asked from Placer to clarify, I'd like to go over, and I want to also say that I am not an expert on defining the software or defending it or anything like that, and they are more than happy to come and speak to the board if there is a desire for that. The reason that Placer is named Placer is because it's about places. It is not called people. It empowers private and public organizations to make better decisions by helping them understand what's really happening in the physical world. It measures the number of people who visit a particular venue or location during a specified period of time, and that foot traffic data also provides visibility into the behavior and characteristics, which I'll show examples of in a few minutes, of visitors to various locations. Placer observes the latitude and longitude of mobile devices. They do not collect any personal identifiable information. The data is aggregated and extrapolated to provide visitation insights. No one under the age of 18 is observed. The applications that they partner with know that they do not want this information, and they are required to exclude any information on kids. And I did speak with them specifically about the phone contracts and the discussions we had before. That's not how they are identifying who's under 18. It's the applications that they're using, which in general, I mean, people may lie and say their birth date a different age, but most of the people you can, most of the applications, they know whether they're dealing with youth or not, and they know to exclude that. And also, as a reminder, Placer excludes all locations of sensitivity like child daycare centers, schools, hospitals, military institutes, et cetera, that you cannot get information on. They also exclude, and I'll show an example of that, or discuss an example, when the measurement is too small, because they wouldn't want anybody to be able to try to figure out who somebody was or who people were. Okay, next one, please. This past year, this past calendar year '24 and '25, we used Placer in several different ways. The Economic Development Director provided reports to both potential and existing businesses. In one case, she provided a report of seven different similar facilities in other localities. This is something that would be very difficult for a potential business in Gloucester to be able to say, well, what's going on over here, 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 and here? And to be able to take that information and see how many people from Gloucester are going there, what's the kind of numbers, maybe help them prepare their business market, business plan. When she recently attended the International Council of Shopping Centers Conference, which is an annual event, she took with her Placer reports and went to specific restaurants and businesses that have been mentioned that Gloucester is more interested in. So, she was able to take something to them to try to see that if they fit for us. And then we also created gap reports on what is it that we're missing that people leave the county for, and therefore, we lose economic value. For tourism and special event planning, we've done attendance statistics, looking at where people are coming from.
Ms. Steele, a question of Mr. Gibson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, getting back to the economic development portion of this, what did we use prior to Placer? I mean...
Nothing but the census and...
Because I just, I just want to point out that when the Fox Mills Center was being built, I remember that the construction guy that was coming through Gloucester, driving across the river, called his people and said, hey, we want to put an Audi over here in front of this Walmart. So, I, just because, we had to have been using something, because we had to provide the other places that have already come to that area a reason for them to come. So, we had to have used something, and it was probably not as sophisticated as Placer, but I think there's other things that we could use that would still demonstrate what we need to demonstrate.
If you think about the economic development brochures and things that we've had for years that takes information from the Weldon Cooper Center and the census that talks about how and what our workforce is, you know, just our general demographics, that does give you the average income and the ages and obviously, the population. This report allows us to go much deeper into things. Other, we don't necessarily market specifically for a shopping center. We go in and help, but the owner of a shopping center is also doing that or may have a company that represents them. Many of those companies use either Placer or a similar product. In fact, one of the ones that our Economic Development Director talked to, she said, oh, yeah, 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 that's what you use too. So, she didn't need the additional information because they were using it.
Dr. Worth?
Right. Getting to the specific area of economic development, I know we haven't had Placer in place for a long time, but has it led to any type of activity among businesses expressing interest based on the information that we can provide? Because obviously, big businesses, they're doing this already.
Right.
This is probably important for smaller businesses that don't have the wherewithal, you know, to invest in something like this. So, do we have any information of potential businesses that we don't have to mention that are expressing interest in these types of data that could lead to them develop, being developed here in Gloucester?
So, one thing that we have to do is stay up with others. So, when she goes to a conference, we're preparing something that makes us look like we're in the game. Now, we have something that's a better product on that. I think our success story in one year is learning how to use it and thinking about its potential. Again, I've got some examples that I'll show you. So, I think we have just gotten to the tip of the iceberg of how it will be used. She has been thanked and thanked and thanked for information that she's provided that others said, oh, this is great. You know, that's one of the comments that she made to you all when she presented. That doesn't mean that we got a company yet. But one of the differences, like the, Ms. Spring was encouraged to do cold calls by one of the board members at least. And when we're trying to make cold calls, having information on why this company would be interested in us, we're not just looking at our locality, but we, again, can look at all the other localities and where that business is located and put together a much better case for filling those gaps. For tourism and special event planning, again, looking at the attendance statistics, where people are coming from, where we want to advertise, where we want to market to. We have listed this as a way for doing a return on investment for each of our grants, the Virginia Tourism Foundation Corporation, which is required. We have to come up with some ROI. This is the easiest one for us to be able to manipulate and do and produce, I should say. We are able to review statistics for similar attractions and other events and benchmark from those, and then use reports to help with things like event planning, crowd size, length of stay, those kind of things. Park statistics, this has been a much informative, a much more informative report than just the counter of how many cars, because we're able to look at how long do they stay and have a better understanding, again, of who's coming in from zip codes that have enough representation. So, if they're not enough, they do not break them down and show us that. So, you don't get every single thing, just like you also, they use algorithms, but this is the sort of state of the art. And then comprehensive planning, this is where we thought we were going to have more success than we have, and we've had some frustration there, but we also haven't had the time to put into it as much about how to do the traffic count comparisons. We obviously have VDOT information. VDOT does not do a road count every year, and so, looking at things changing, Placer is updated daily, and you get information as much as, or as early as four days after an event. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Ms. Steele, I know you've got a lot going on, but I just want to ask a question. You probably have it in here. So, we've been using Placer, and we just had the Daffodil Festival. So, what did Placer, what, what...
I've got half slides on the Daffodil Festival coming up. And I apologize that I didn't get this to you all earlier. You know, there's been a lot going on with the budget, and so, I was literally preparing this this weekend and finishing it up this week. So, I mentioned to you all, months and months ago, I sent you an email where I had played with sort of a business gap. We hear all the time, and we are getting something on Main Street, but people talking about wanting a steakhouse. So, I reformatted, went back and looked at it for the, for the year 2024. If we look at Texas Roadhouse located in York County, 5.6% of their attendance is coming from Gloucester zip codes. Again, there are more than that, because they're not counting if it's like one person came from a zip code. It has to be enough that they cannot be identifiable. So, we're only looking at three zip codes in that count. The Longhorn in Newport News, 5.5% of their customer base is Gloucester residents, and Longhorn in Williamsburg, 3.3. So, when we start thinking about where are we bleeding out, something that we don't necessarily have here, is, that can be a thing for economic development to specifically go after versus if I gave you the same report and I showed how many people go to the food lion in York County. It's not going to be anything like that, because we have two food lions. The Daffodil Festival statistics, the total count, which, you know, every year, how many people came? How many people come? Yeah, 20 to 30, 20 to 25,000, we don't really know. This gives us a better count. Is it exactly to the person? No, but it's the best information that we can gather. And this year, with two really good weather days, we had 23,100 people attend. I mean, I'm sorry, visits. And those are unique visitors, 21,000. So, people like me went both Saturday and Sunday and were accounted for on both days. And so, that's why you see that 1.08. It means that 8% of the people came both days. And then the average dwell time, which is very important to study and look at that, not just for one-time reporting, but as they're looking at benchmarking for themselves and goals and what's happening, are we seeing that people are spending less time at the festival year after year? Does that mean they're getting bored? Does that mean that they, you know, it's not enough news? So, there's things that that can tell you that are insightful. Right now, we're right at an hour and a half. This is a clear chart straight out of Placer that shows you the Saturday versus the Sunday attendance. So, the festival committee might look at, okay, we're maxed out on Saturday. It feels great, but, you know, how many more people do we want to cram onto, you know, Main Street and make it more crowded? Maybe we, we're not too full, but we're not, you know, we don't want to become the Urbana Oyster Festival and be, you know, wall-to-wall with people. But there's really a lot of opportunity on Sunday for growth. Okay, the next one. So, I took one restaurant, and this is where I'll tell you too, I tried to do other businesses on Main Street to look at the impact of the festival weekend versus the weekend after, which I did do weather checks on them, and they were pretty similar. It was not quite as pretty the next weekend, but it wasn't bad. It wasn't like 35 degrees or anything that would keep people inside. Not an exact science, but it gives you some good information. Olivia's has enough people. The other, the other businesses that I looked on Main Street, I could not pull reports. It tells you, not enough statistics. Olivia's this year had 1,300 people in there on Saturday and Sunday. And on the following weekend, they only had 636 people, 636 visits with 627. There are days that I've eaten at Olivia's two times in a row, and obviously, others have too, if they've gone for breakfast or breakfast, lunch, dinner, whichever. You'll also notice the dwell time. Most likely, the shorter time was everybody wanted to get out of there, go to the festival, and they might have even been faster in their service with having more servers there to try to get the turnover rate faster, where the following weekend, they could have taken more time. Information like this gives to the festival committee hard facts that they can say to the owner of Olivia's, we're making an impact. We're looking for sponsorships. This is, you know, we, we see what's happening, and this can be looked at year after year, going all the way back to 2018. And to be able to solicit sponsors, having numbers that show the impact is very important. Another one that I didn't print up was I looked at Starbucks. I had been told one time that Starbucks' busiest day of the year was at Daffodil Festival, and I can tell you that is absolutely furthest thing from the truth. I looked at their, you know, at least for this past year. I looked at the chart, and it's not. It's a good day for them, but it's not nearly their, their best day. But those are the kind of things, again, when we're looking for sponsors to help pay for that festival. Okay? The next was looking at who's here, and as I noted, these are indicators for seeking sponsors to say, we've got your audience coming to our event, if it's an age. It's also an entertainment challenge, and this shows it too. We've got the two largest groups are the 25 to 34 and the over 65. When you're thinking about who to have as performers, what kind of entertainment that can be very expensive to pay for at a festival, there's two different groups. So, things that the festival committee can study and, and work on. And I think this is the, yes, sir?
Okay. So, the pink, I mean, the light gray, it's those people who live in Virginia, right?
Right. And so, we're looking at, we're higher numbers for seniors coming to this event, but this is the weekend measurement.
And so, these are zip codes that tell people, that tell Placer that they're from Virginia or from out of state? Is that how they're using that?
This is looking at what Virginia is, we know what the average ages are for Virginia.
Oh, oh, oh.
And then for that weekend, who do we have?
Right. Okay. Gotcha. Sorry.
Okay. Next one. This map is, is a lot of fun when you're using the program, and it's interactive. We know that the Daffodil Festival is a hometown event. It's one that people come back to for reunions, and it's just really a great and important part of our tradition. It also, for events like this, if you lose your hometown crowd, then when it rains or something or bad years, you lose your shirt. So, it's really important to keep our local audience, and we do this for them. But it's also a tourism event, and it has an impact. So, here, this year, we had 42% of the attendees were from Gloucester, and then you can see the surrounding areas. So, this chart shows you by the colors and things, and you can also take the mouse, and if you move around, so I went to the big clump that's to the west of Midlothian there in Richmond, and that's Powhatan. in Richmond, and that's Powhatan. So you can move the mouse over that and it'll tell you exactly how many people came from those, it's by census block and by, or ZIP code. So it's not specific to any address, it's just showing you the area. So we know we had 187 people come from Powhatan. We had 46 come from Charlottesville. The festival committee and the marketing team can be looking at, okay, we've just put a whole bunch of advertisement out in the Richmond area. What's working, what's not working? Or do we need to continue to advertise? It gives, that's where it comes into the helping with decision-making and understanding, again, more of who is here.
Okay, so with regard to those people from those two particular locations, is it possible that they had family here in Gloucester and they came just for the weekend, not people who said, hey, I think there's a festival in Gloucester, have never been there, let me go? So we don't know?
No, and the Daffodil Festival report, when you pull up a standard report on an event that you set where it is, so we draw the boundary, and it covers the whole, like, blocked off area of the festival grounds, and then we set the dates on it. We get a much longer report than what I'm telling you. It tells you where do the people are going to after the event and where are they coming to, you know, from the event. There's lots of other business, and it's almost like sometimes you don't want to get into the weeds too far because that's really not what you need. You get the most that you need for the bang for the buck, but it gives many different things in there. It's not going to say this person has relatives or anything like that, of course, but we may know of, I mean, we can assume that is a very, often people who've moved away from Gloucester come home or tell their family to come home for that weekend.
Do we know anything about the economic impacts? That is, obviously, for Olivia's, you can figure out an average meal, meaning average meals tax increase, but with that many people, they obviously are spending a fair amount of money, you know, at the festival itself, buying things. Now, we don't know what type of sales tax revenue we get from those people, correct?
There's more that we can do that goes with the revenue generation. Some of that is using Virginia Tourism, their statistics, and they have an average day traveler and an average overnight, and we can just take their statistics because they're a much bigger organization. They use a national company that helps figure out those things, and we can apply our numbers to that. It's harder to get completely behind that because we have food trucks, we have, you know, all different kinds of things that are happening, and some of the food trucks we have may have their business license, you know, located somewhere else, so the turnover rate may just be the taxes for that day, but not the employment and things. There is also an additional program, and we're not interested in buying any additional services, but there, for those who are heavier into this, like, again, maybe if I owned a shopping center and I needed to know more, there are some paid services that get more into income, not income, but in spending. I feel comfortable enough just using the state's figures, and as I'll be reporting to you all in the future on that, that's what I'll be using is Virginia Tourism.
I mean, one of the things that I think we've been interested in are how do we attract small businesses and make the, we've talked about how we want to make the county, or trying to make the county business-friendly and bring in a small business, which is, it's a very tough environment, you know, for small businesses, especially when you have the big box stores. But, you know, when you think about a place like Fox Mill, you know, people are coming from outside the county, Matthews, Middlesex, New Kent, or whatever, and, you know, they may be coming to, let's say Walmart or whatever, you know, pet stores, whatever, but do those people then shop and then stop and eat? And it would be good because to know that, and I'm sure Mr. Kubicki in developing Fox Mill looks that, and I'm sure has that information that makes him decide, do we put another restaurant or not, which is, you know?
Right. Well, the next slide starts to go there a little bit, and this is looking at our two hotels, the Hampton Inn and the Holiday Inn Express. You see the number of visits and visitors and obviously people, you might have two or three in a party, and that's one of the things, that there's some additional information here that's available to us. But the key point I wanted to bring out is that 69 and a half percent of the people who stay at the Hampton Inn go over to Fox Mill, and 68% who stay at the Holiday Inn go over to Fox Mill. So whether they're going to Walmart, or whether they're getting gas, or whether they're shopping, a lot of them go to the 7-Eleven too, that's on the same side of the street. 30%, more than 30% go to Chick-fil-A. So how, using this, understand this information, again, it's providing partnership and marketing opportunities where if a hotel is trying to increase their attendance, or we're trying to help the hotel because it's helping the lodging tax, that's helping the whole tourism economic development, then we can say, hey, why don't you, you know, maybe talk to Chick-fil-A and see if they'll throw in some passes and say, for every family, for every kid, you know, something to help beef up some of their marketing. And the next one. This is where it shows the visitation at both locations. If you look at the top green circle for the Hampton Inn, that's the Daffodil Festival. We were their highest weekend in 2024, which is great. We were not for Holiday Inn Express. It was a good weekend, it's just underneath, but you can see they did better in June, whether that's family reunions, weddings, et cetera. The two red circles, these were alarming to me. I would not know this if I wasn't looking for a program like this. It doesn't mean I couldn't dig through lodging tax things, but those are not by law allowed to have the name on them. When somebody pays their taxes, we don't know how much the Hampton Inn paid versus the other. But here, right with using their algorithms and from this program, we know that May is a terrible month. Why? May is a great month. We need to do more tourism promotions and marketing to help these hotels. It could be fishing events, it could be, you know, canoeing, kayaking, outdoor recreation, different marketing partnerships that we can help them get their rates to go up.
My guess is that's college graduations. People aren't traveling to Gloucester because there's no colleges here for people to go watch their kids graduate from.
And absolutely, that's true. I'm sure if you looked at Williamsburg, there would be, that would be one of the highest weekends they have, other than maybe their homecoming games and things. But it's our challenge, whether you have people going away, there's still people who are traveling who don't have kids graduating, and we can have them come here. You know, what is it we can do to entice them?
Do you think they thought of June, which could be related to the high school graduation issue?
Could be, but there's a whole lot of weddings that are held here, and I'm very excited about the new owners. I love the former owners of Warner Hall, but very excited about the new managers at Warner Hall and what they're planning to do there, and also looking at the plans, the latest information for the old bank. And that we might be hosting more events, and again, this is where we can kind of help put these people together so they know, because the other thing that I've been looking at is, and we're going to have a meeting with the hotel management team soon, we don't want to do an event and try to attract tourism when they're already maxed out, right? So we have to stay in good communication with them and understand where their needs are, and that's something that I think this is, that sort of helps get that conversation going that we haven't been doing. Okay, my final slide. So the conclusions and the recommendation, Placer's being used by over 1,600 towns, cities, and counties across the United States to make and perform decisions. That's just their government-type membership, not their businesses. Whether or not Gloucester purchases a subscription, that data is still there, it's still collected, and it's still available. It's available to the other localities that are looking at us and seeing what we're doing, and maybe it's just information-seeking, or maybe it's something where it's a competitive situation, just like when I'm looking at how many people are eating steak across the river and wishing they were eating it here. So there's, you know, there, an economic competitive edge is a possibility there. We have made good use of Placer. Again, it's our first year, it's, they have the best customer service I've ever known of any type of software business, but it's, I would also, and I've told them this too, when you don't work with something every single day, it's not quite as intuitive as I wish it would be. It's, I think they are honestly doing everything they can to make it be the end-all. I know that we can continue to use this data. I think we will be more proactive and can be more proactive in our economic development. We can better target our advertisements, we can compare better and more competitive grant applications, and we can better understand visitation at county-owned sites and businesses. So it's recommendation that we continue this subscription. I'm obviously aware that there have been some citizens that have spoken against it. They have their right to their opinion, and I'm the one using the program with others, and my opinion is different than theirs. I've also heard, you know, negativity and concerns on the board's part, and maybe it's because of the citizen comments that you're hearing, or maybe it's for your own concerns. I will respect and honor whatever the board's decision is. I don't think it's necessarily a really great way to go to come down to the board for $26,000 budgeting decisions, but I know this is a sensitive one, where other $26,000 decisions wouldn't be, and you wouldn't even begin to ask anything about it, but this one has been. So I'm happy to answer any questions, happy to have Placer come in, and would just like to be able to make a decision so we know what we're doing, and I'll be very honest and say that if the board chooses to not let us renew, I would ask that you let me renew for the month of June so I can burn every single report I can out of it before we give it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any discussion? Any further discussion?
So Placer is out there regardless of what we do.
Yes.
It is collecting information regardless of whether we buy in or not, that's available to people who purchase subscriptions.
Yes.
Right? So as you said, those towns or cities, they can, you know, look at what is going on in Gloucester. You know, I like the idea that can we use this specifically for economic development more than anything else, because that's where we want to build that base, and we want to do things to try to attract businesses to build that base. Now, we've had a hard time getting businesses to come to Gloucester, the type of businesses that pay good salaries, you know, that we can keep people in this community, and I think that's a relevant thing is where, how do we best use this to improve our economic outlook in all of this?
And I think understanding businesses that the board wants to attract that are feasible. We've had jokes about the Sam's Club and the Costco. We're not getting them, but there may be other businesses that you'd like to see more information on and going after. The other thing is really with the tourism push that I hope we will see year after year coming stronger and stronger is measuring our success, understanding what our ROI on that is, whether that means contractors or whether it means full businesses, but it's what are the dollars coming in on our meals, our lodging, and sales taxes?
Yes.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So I appreciate the presentation, and I think the key point, and maybe somebody should come up with an AI video of this. If you picture Gloucester and 1,000 people in white coats with clipboards taking down statistics and going to all the restaurants and the businesses and the parks, taking down all that data, they're all walking around. I think there's an impression that if we don't subscribe to this software, using that analogy, that all of those white-coded statisticians would be banned from the county, and there's no data collection, and that every shred of information is protected from those who may want to collect it. And that's, that's not accurate, because whether we subscribe or not, the data's going to be collected, and other businesses are looking at that data, other local governments are looking at that data. So we can't turn off the switch. We can't turn off the spotlight. It's whether, do we want to use what's lighted up and illuminated by this data? And, but then the next question is, if we want to use it, is our people's privacy protected? And we all sign up for apps, we have to put in certain data, and obviously, we're putting in our ZIP codes and our age in many of these apps, and then they partner with Placer, and that's how Placer's collecting, our age and our location. And so that data's already collected, and nobody reads the license terms. They just scroll to the bottom and say, I agree, because you want the app. And that's how, that's how this is happening, obviously. So if it's only collecting the age and it's only collecting the location, I don't think that's an invasion of privacy that is going to harm someone, in my personal opinion. And then the next question is, well, is it effective? And for $26,000 to be able to target ad spends, to recruit new businesses, it could be a huge tool. Just say, for instance, there's a big, there's a whole social media trend in Gloucester of people who want a Texas Roadhouse restaurant. Well, if Porters on Main becomes one of the most popular restaurants on Main Street, according to this data, but they don't have enough room in there to serve all of the public, and the EDA goes to Texas Roadhouse, and this is the most popular restaurant, bring your Texas Roadhouse to Gloucester. That's the type of use that this software could be applied to. So I think it's an effective tool, it protects privacy, and the flashlight is not going to be turned off no matter what decision we make. If there's still hesitation on the part of the board, then maybe we bring in a representative from Placer, and we can ask questions, the citizens can hear from them if there's still any doubt, but that's my take on it.
Comment?
Chris. I understand that Placer is out there and other localities are using it. Still doesn't make it right. I understand that, you know, when I sign up for an app on my phone, it's going to collect certain data. I also ask that it not be shared. So I still have major concerns because I, nothing has been solved for me as far as the kid, the children go, because if the children want to get on an app, they're just going to say they're 45. They don't care. If a kid wants to get on an app and they're 12 years old and it says you got to be 16 to get on this app, guess what? They're 18, or they're 20, or whatever the age limit has to be. I don't think there's enough, honestly, it's not a matter of whether or not Gloucester County should be using this. This information should not be able to be purchased from these people, and Placer shouldn't be in existence, in my opinion, because 25 years ago, I guess more like 30 years ago, you had a home phone. There was very few cell phones, and this wasn't an option. And then I'm not saying that this is good, bad, or indifferent. We haven't gotten a single thing in a year from the information Placer has been given to a business or any type of job recruitment or anything else, and I'm not saying in the next year that it won't be. What happens in three years when Placer goes from $26,000 a year to $500,000 a year? Like Tyler Munus has just done. I mean, there's no guarantees. Me, honestly, this, Placer AI has no business at all. It's to the point, I'm ready to get my, see if I can get a pager back and get a home phone turned back on. You want to get me, I'll call you when I get home, because I don't want people having this type of access, and if they can get that, guess what? Someone a bad actor can get the rest of it. So that's my concern.
Okay, yes.
Just to note one thing, our census data has all the numbers of children population percentage-wise in Gloucester County, because that is something that we all do as part of the, you know, government requirement that we're supposed to fill out the census. Placer AI uses our census data and does extrapolations to try to estimate if there are certain things where they're looking at for children, where how many might be. But in all of the things that you run down, there, in all the charts, they don't have a listing for children. There is no under the age of 18, right? So it's starting with the adult. So if some child has lied and said they're 45, they're going to show up as 45 in that chart, which may be wrong, but those children, they're not separated, there's not a separate calculations or things. Anything that they do with kids is purely from our census data and estimating, just like when we say what the average household size is and those kind of things. It doesn't mean that, you know, Mr. Crisco, you're going to change your opinion or anything like that, but I just want to reassure that there is no ability to get a child from this program.
Because they're, well, that's not true, Ms. Steel, because all they show us is what's 18 and above. They might have data on everybody who has a cell phone from the age of five to 17. They just might not make that data available. So we don't know, and that's my concern is, I don't know. And I don't know if I would trust for someone from Placer to come in here and tell me that they don't, because this is not some, I don't see the benefit of a program like this other than, I mean, to me, it's only as good as the information that's fed into it. So So I don't see the true benefit. I think the better benefit would be, Mr. Ward, how many customers did you serve over the weekend? How many different receipts did you have? I don't care the number amount, but you would probably be able to tell you, he served twice as many on Daffodil weekend as he did another weekend, and he'd be by tickets, I mean, or receipts. The information is there without spending the $26,000 a year, and no one knows what it'll be in five years.
How many local areas around Gloucester, like Matthews, Middlesex, how many of these localities have Placer?
I'm not aware of any of them. The only one I'm aware of is that the PDC wanted it, and they did not purchase it because of the expense.
Right. Because when you say 1,600 towns, cities, and counties, that's probably a very, very small percentage of counties and cities in the United States. So if we don't have any, I mean Hampton, Newport News, they're not using Placer?
There are, yes, there are. There's in Virginia, and again, when we were able to get hold of doing a reference check, we contacted them. And they're not going to, because they're not going to tell you who their customers are, but we can check around and say, hey, do you use? And, you know, we've done that.
When you go to the Hampton, I mean, the mayors and vice chairs or whatever, is that ever an issue that's brought up?
Yes, I brought it up when we first were purchasing it, and...
And what kind of response did you get from?
Very much an interest, but the difference in some of the positions, the people, the other mayors, not mayors and chairs, but the county administrators and the city managers, I think I would have had a totally different response if I had been talking to the Economic Development Directors. And from what Ms. Spring says, that's also true. And yes, there is a way to gather some of this information, but part of the benefit is the efficiency of it, that we're not having to go to all these different people and ask them to give us their numbers, and they're not having to count and add. It's if we want to target market, if we want to understand more about what we're doing and if we're successful at it, it's quick.
Mr. Nikosia.
So I can see both sides of, Mr. Gibson, Mr. Crisco. So my question is more along the lines, I think I've heard this question before, but just point of clarification. So cell phones, I would say that's how they, we've established that's how they're tracked. But if I have a cell phone, my wife has a cell phone, and say, my son has one, how do they determine which one is mine, which one is my wife's, and which one is my son's?
I asked that specific question, and I, again, I'm not their rep. If that is the holding point, I'd rather they explain that. But from my understanding is their partnership agreements with their app providers, they do not want information on children. If it's a known child, then they are not tracking. They don't want that GPS point. If you're switching phones, I mean, does that mean that some kid gets counted in the 1,000 people that went to eat at Olivia's? Probably so, because not only, you know, if it's like switching phones or if it fits into the algorithm, but it's not an individual child, it's not even the ZIP code for an individual child. If somebody wants to break the law or go against what their contract says that they do, yes, they could, but that's not what our contract would be with them and what they say they do.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, gentlemen, we have a recommendation before us here.
Well, I think given the hesitation in the questions, perhaps we should have somebody from Placer come answer questions. There's still questions to be answered. I think that certainly these concerns about privacy are legitimate, but if there is a sense that our phones are not collecting every single thing we do...
Always.
I think that, I mean, whatever you buy, wherever you go, your GPS, your purchases, and how many times have you started talking about a topic, and the next thing you know, you see it in your social media feed trying to sell it to you? So this is collecting everything. So having a software that just is monitoring someone's age and where they live, and not even your name, your data, anything, I mean, it's a microcosm of everything that we carry around in our pocket every day. So I think there's a massive, massive distinction. But clearly, there's some discomfort with it, so if the board wants to hear from Placer, that sounds good.
Okay. What's?
Mr. Wilmot?
Yes.
I want to ask a question, too, if you finish.
Also, I understand that Placer doesn't want to tell us who else uses the service. Is that what you said?
They're not going to tell other people about us either, because that's what a lot of businesses, they don't necessarily tell.
But FOIA would require that the jurisdictions tell us whether they utilize that service and give us a copy of their contract.
We can do that.
Yes, so it is available, so let's make them give it to us. Not them, the other jurisdictions. So if you would like to know, I don't know whether it's relevant, actually, because I don't care what other jurisdictions do. I don't. But you might. So if you want me to find out who else uses them, we'll just FOIA request them, and they have to respond within five business days.
But my question is, based on your FOIA comment, what of this information could be FOIA'd from us? I mean, is it just going to be strictly what they give us? Or do we know that the information that they provide us, is that all the information they've received? That's my concern.
How do we just find out whether they have a contract with them?
No, I'm saying if someone brought you a FOIA request based on information that was in one of these graphs, and they provided us with a FOIA request requesting that we get the information that they gave to the county administrator, where does it stop with? I guess it stops with Placer?
And I don't know the level at which we would have to respond. But I was just going from the, do you have a contract with Placer? That's where I'm starting. And I think they would have to respond yes or no, and give us a copy of their contract. But I don't know the data. I'm not sure how much that would be exempt or disclosable. I don't know. It's troubling.
Ms. Steel, is the cost of the contract based on the population size of the county?
I believe it is. When we first did the arrangements and we watched a number of different webinars with them, I discussed that, but that's been over a year ago, and I do not remember. I do know that they had a special that they were offering, the Main Street programs, and that was less expensive, but it was not the full program. So I think that they, and I think there are people who pay Placer a lot more, not necessarily, I mean, I think basically because of size, but also because they offer other services that deal with the financial side that we're not looking at.
Okay, so, yes, sir, Mr. Nikosia.
Sorry. Ms. Steel, just again, from my mind, to get in the right spot. You said even if we as board said, no, we're not going to pay that price, these localities can still look at the information.
Right, just like we can look at any place that we want to.
Can we see that if we don't buy in, right?
No, no.
All right, so if we don't buy in, they can see our information, but we can't cross-reference what somebody in a locality of our size is doing.
Right, and I did ask if, and to verify, that they do not offer contract services, because the next thing would be you hire a company to do these kind of reports for you, you hire a company who has a system, and they don't offer that. So it's a self-serve kind of thing.
Okay, gentlemen. So what's the question? Do we want to hear from Placer?
I would have thought someone would have been here tonight after our conversation a couple months ago.
They asked, and I said I did not want them to come until, because of the travel and everything, unless it was necessary, and I told them, and so they did offer, and I didn't want to just spring that on you all, and so if that was something you wanted, sorry for the delay, but we'll get them here. And, you know, it's, I'm like, this person lays it on the table and tells you, you know, what I think and feel. So I don't want to use programs that the board is divided over. That's not a comfortable feeling for me. But I will also tell you, it does not make me feel comfortable that we may be held back from best practices and being competitive with neighbors and, I mean, the things that I just showed you tonight, we didn't have before. They may not be a big wow to you, but knowing the things that we can do now, we did not have that ability. So if it's not this, we're going to have to look for what is it we can use that helps us to be competitive. And I would rather not use a program than have a divided board that is always resentful or not liking this program. So if there's, you know, we can have them come in, we can talk and find out if there's other things, but it's, an economic development department has to do research and has to have statistics. That's how you succeed.
How long have we had an economic development department or authority in the county?
Well, first of all, we've had an economic development department for a long time, probably before the internet was invented. So things are different.
So, but it's all but one year that we've had economic development, and we hadn't used Placer?
Right. This was not available, this technology was not available five years ago. This is new, and when I saw it come out on ICMA that was telling all the local governments across the country, that's when I signed up for the program. Ms. Spring has enjoyed using it. I'm impressed with how much she's learned how to use it, and she will find other means if that, again, if I don't want the board not pleased with what we're doing.
So let me ask you this. So this lists towns, cities, counties, but it's also available to big businesses like Costco.
Yes, yes.
I mean, so they, this is an independent organization, not listed as towns, cities, or counties. Do we know how many of these businesses access things like that? I mean, you know.
I'm sure many of them do that are actively marketing management firms like Talheimers and others that are outselling spots and trying to rent spots. Yes, I think most of them are using.
Places like Chick-fil-A.
I mean, they can sit there and tell you how many cars drive by. So that's one of the things, that a business looking to come here says, what's the drive-by rate? And we can tell you. We can tell you what it is, what it is per hour, what it is per weekday. That's all available through Placer, and that's the kind of things that those businesses look for.
Well, I do appreciate your concern about the fact that, you know, the board seems to be, you know, questioning issues related to personal privacy. I would like to hear from Placer myself, and it might be worthwhile, since we still have the software till the end of June, correct?
I can renew it for, it ends May 31st, so I can renew it for another month to allow us the time. Like I said, I would absolutely want to run every report I could before losing it.
How much would it cost to renew one month?
It's just prorated, so it's the amount divided by 12, and it might be the new, I'm sure it would be the 26 rate, not the 25 rate.
So roughly 1,500?
It's like 26, so, yeah, a couple, right.
Yeah, right, a little 2,000.
Okay, where are we? So we hear from Placer?
But that would be, you know, they couldn't come until, so our next meeting is with the Planning Commission, correct? And the second meeting in May? What are we doing the joint meeting with?
August.
Oh, it's August, okay.
Planning Commissioner or EDA?
Well, June's the EDA.
June is the EDA.
June's the EDA, that's right. Okay.
That might be a good one to have.
It could be. I've already, you know, sent out letters, I told you all in your weekly report, that I'm really trying to present information on economic development and a push. This is something that Ms. Spring and I've been talking about, and Mr. Barber, as we're talking about really pushing for tourism and other things that can help with our assets that we currently have. By that time, we will have held the meeting up at RCC, and we'll understand maybe some public sentiment there, too. So I think if it's, if the board is flexible, I think I could ask them when they're available, and if it's not that night, and if it's, you know, the first meeting in June versus the work session, if that's okay?
It's, yes, yes, it's okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
But let me ask you this. The first meeting in May is June, our contract ends at the end of May. Are we going to, are you going to go ahead as a, your decision as a county administrator to get one more month?
I would like to have that flexibility, yes, because, again, there's so much data out there for...
I have no problem you extending one month until we can then see if these people could come at the same time we meet with the EDA people.
The one thing I don't think we really need to worry about is what businesses look at it. What we need to be concerned about is what Gloucester wants to do. And if we want Mr. Wilmot to go and determine what other localities have it, that's fine. But I don't, I think what Gloucester does is what Gloucester does, and we don't need to be concerned about what businesses look at it, what businesses have the contracts, what don't, whatever else. Because if you're large enough, if you're Walmart, you're going to decide based on your sales that are there and everything else. They're going to check their own information. So what we need to do as a board is determine if we want it or we don't want it. That's as simple as that, and that's all, when Placer gets here, that's what they need to either convince us or not.
Okay, any further discussion?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Steel. Okay, we'll move on to our board appointments. First, we have, first here, we have our Board of Building Codes and Appeals, and we have one countywide citizen representative needed, and we have one name here before us. And you want us just to go through all of them, gentlemen? Okay. Then we have the Board of Equilization. We don't have a representative for, yeah?
Has anybody talked to?
Anybody.
Mr. Dome? Dome?
Stephen Dome. Nobody talked to Mr. Stephen Dome? I just read his information here.
Sounds like second chair. Person that wishes you credit.
Mm-hmm.
On nomination?
Yeah, on nomination. Okay. All right, want to do them all at once?
Second nomination.
Okay, second, all in favor?
No.
Oh, we're going to do them all at the end? Okay. All right, Board of Equilization, we didn't have one yet. Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission. Yes, Mr. Crisco?
I have not called Mr. Renew yet. I would like one more month. I have a gentleman that would be a very, very good candidate. He's just trying to close out what he is doing before he applies, and if I can't get him to apply, then I'll reach out to Mr. Renew, and we'll make that appointment at our next meeting.
Okay, thanks, sir.
All right. Let's go back up to Social Services, nominee Courtney Hawkins.
Okay.
And James Newey for Zonville.
One second.
And Laurie Prestes, Ms. Kip.
And I guess we'll go down to Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, Kenny Richardson, because he's the Planning Commission rep. It's on page 90.
Yeah. I can't get to it. I keep freezing it up again. I can't get rid of it. At what?
I must close this off.
Twice, that's twice.
He's got it back.
And then, while we're going down, before we get to the Plan and Steering Committee, Kenny Richardson and John Meyer for Planning Commission.
Kenny Richardson and John Meyer for Planning Commission.
I'll second that. We need to find someone from the Avenue of the Planning Commission. I have a suggestion, and I will not call that person today, but I'll have that information subsequent to the next meeting.
Okay, now, I guess we'll go to the Compt Plan Steering Committee.
Do you do utilities?
Utilities?
Okay, I've got somebody that's interested, well, I'm interested in him, but...
Sure.
This is a catch.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Chair, for the Petsworth applicants, I need to speak with them, so I'm going to defer until the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
If you've got these, let's say this, based on what the Planning Commission is trying to do and get the citizen comment, citizen input other than just Planning Commission members, I think it's important that these people have signed up within the last month, that they're interested in being on it. I think if you know them or have any idea, they are interested in it, but if you know anything, know them at all, it might be helpful to put them on it. So we can have, start it, everybody start at the same time with this, because we're meeting next week.
Yes. Okay, so we have before us here, Mr. Donald Sandridge, this is one, have I talked to him?
I'll nominate.
You're nominating?
Yes.
Okay, okay, Mr. Carl Lindsay.
That's Gloucester Point, next one is page...
You're in a different order.
The next one is going to be, the next in our packet is for, the next in our packet is Petsworth, not to put you on the spot, Mr. Gibson, so let's go to where?
Where, we have Mr. Tanner Hirsch.
I'll second Mr. Hirsch.
Okay.
Then we have York District.
York District, and Mr. Bazani is not here. Okay, we have York, Mr. Bazani is not here, and do we, do we move on that one, or wait?
I think we need to, I personally think we need to make a move on it.
Okay.
Well, three people.
Okay.
It was King, Ginder, and...
So do we have a motion on the name that we do?
No, I don't have the name, Mr. King.
I'll second.
Okay, who's the second? That's York District. Okay, and then moving down, we have, is that this?
That's it.
That's it for those?
It just goes...
That's it. Okay. So we're moving second, all of those, right? So is that something we need to poll, or just all in favor of the names that we've approved?
Aye.
Okay, I have it as carried. Okay. Moving on. County Attorney, I don't know.
Mr. Chair, you should have received a memo from me regarding the Walsh water issue. At this point, I suggest you do nothing further in this regard, however, please read carefully the correspondence and let me know if you decide you want to do something different. So that's where we are. Other than that, I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. Happy to see you. Okay, Boards and Commission reports. Any? No Boards and Commission reports? Supervisor discussions? No supervisor discussions? Okay, we have no closed meetings, so what's next?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned.